Good evening, everyone. We're going to call the meeting for regular city council meeting for April 6th to order. I'd ask that everyone stand so we can say the pledge of allegiance. We'll have an invocation by Aldo Lady McDowell. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord God, we thank you for blessing us to see another day. We ask you, Lord, to come into our council chambers. Bless the city of Markham. Bless each and every council member that is present on tonight. Bless us as we conduct the business of saving, that everything that we do is done in deep and in order. In Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen. Roll call, please.
Mayor Expower.
Here.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer, present. Alderman Jones.
Present.
Aldo Lady Wanda McDowell.
Present.
And Aldo McBarren.
Present.
We have a four.
Approval of minutes, regular city council meeting minutes for March 16th, 2022.
Mayor Expower.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve the city council minutes of the meeting for March 16th, 2022. With any noted corrections.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Barren, second by Aldo Lady McDowell for approval of regular city council meeting minutes for March 16th, 2022. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Aldo Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Authorization claims and accounts, the bill lists.
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion that we approve the authorization and claim list for April 6th, 2022, which reads as follows. Corporate $537,930.79. Water store $215,973.85. We have solid waste $118,769.71. We also have motor fuel $47,886.34. We have a Marco St. Benedict complex $14,162.35. Our road rent $11,441.23. We also have a tip at Dixie Highway, $10,330 even. Our tip for interstate crossing, $2,663.44. And we have our tip for Jetta Business Park, $1,000, which give us a total of $960,157.71. Add to that, we have our manual check at $1,156.1,056.26, which gives a rental of $961,313.91.
Motion by Aldo Lady Hampton, second by Alderman Baron for approval of authorization, claim and counts, bill lists. Any question? Roll call.
Aldo Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We're moving to city attorney's report.
Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, inspector, city attorney, report appears on the page starting with 8A. It's a proposed resolution approving the extension and renewal of the re-proclamation and declaration of a continuing local state of emergency within the city of Markham and approving the mayor's determination regarding modifications to in-person meetings in response to the COVID-19 pandemic, April 6th, 2022.
Yes.
Motion to approve of resolution 22 dash R, dash 675, approving the extension of the re-proclamation. And that resolution will get to New Orleans State emergency within the city of Markham and approve the mayor's determination regarding modification in person meeting in response to COVID-19 pandemic dated April 6th, 2022.
Motion by Alderman Barren, second by Aldo Lady Hampton for approval of resolution approving extension and renewal of re-proclamation and declaration as read. Question? Roll call.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer.
Yes.
Aldo Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next, we have an APD proposed resolution authorizing the city of Markham's participation in the 2022 program year Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program. And within that resolution, it speaks of the project related to sewer improvements for the amount or any amount of $40,000. May I?
Mayor Expower.
Yes.
I make a motion that we approve resolution number 22 dash R, dash 676? You have to come here, 676, is that correct?
675.
Oh, sorry, 675.
No, 676.
676.
Oh, the other one, yes, so 676.
676. A resolution authorizing the city of Markham's participation in the 2022 program year Cook County Community Development Block Grant Program.
Motion by Aldo Lady Hampton, second by Alderman Jones for resolution of authorizing city of Markham to participate in 2022 program year for Cook County Development Block Grant. Question?
Yes, have you marked the 20,000, any areas?
We did, Alderman. We, you know, how we go by the, we've got an old engineer sheet that we're kind of going by. But we can review that. I'm not, I don't know off the top of my head where they're at, but, okay. But, you know, goes by the grade, the grade, the streets. So that's how they did this, the same way.
Okay.
We'll have some flexibility on some of the other stuff, though, so I'm looking for those.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Sounds good.
All right. Okay, any other question?
No, sir.
All right. Roll call.
Aldo Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
With respect to items A, C, D, E, F, and G, there appear to be one same matter.
Okay, all right. Over to the city clerk's report.
I have three business licenses this evening. The first one is Auto Services Express LLC. The second one will be 167 Dixie Food and Liquor LLC. And this, the third one will be Amicia's Enterprises LLC. And I believe that they're all online.
Okay. So, first one we have is Auto Services Express LLC. First, can we have a motion to open the meeting to Auto Services Express LLC?
I'm at that motion.
Is second?
Second.
On favor? Okay. Hi, good evening. Auto Services LLC. Can you hear us?
Yes, please.
Okay. Good evening. We just want to, the city council here may have some questions about your, your business tonight.
Yes.
Yes.
So why don't you just open up by telling us what, what your business is and what you're going to be doing over there?
My business is, is doing service to vehicles and bodywork. And also doing my own, because I have a dealership also in Matlock, and we do our customers' service through that service over there.
Council, do you all have any questions with this business tonight?
Is this your first enterprise? Hello?
Yes, it is. This is, this is our first service and mechanic. But we've been, we've been in the car dealer business for the past 10 years now.
You have any cars outside? Any auto cars you work on outside?
No, no cars be working out outside. Everything is inside, indoor.
He's got a seal, he's got a seal.
It's installed.
It was, it was, it was the body shop that was down there before. Central Park.
158, Central Park.
Correct. Any other questions?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right. All right, sir.
Make a motion that we close the door. Services Express LLC.
All favor? Eyes have it.
Mayor Expower.
Yes.
Motion to grant a business license to Auto Services Express LLC.
Motion by Alderman Barren, second by Alderman Jones to approve license for Auto Services Express LLC. Roll call.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer.
Yes.
Aldo Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Yusef?
Yes.
Yeah, she's building department tomorrow about licensure, okay?
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, okay.
Okay, 167 Dixie Food and Liquor LLC.
I'm here.
Make a motion that we close the door to Dixie Food and Liquor LLC. Second.
Okay, I'll, I'll favor. Eyes have it. Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm looking for your name here.
Jimmy. Jimmy Joy.
Oh, it's just someone. Oh, Jimmy?
Yeah, Jimmy Joy, Jimmy Joy, yeah.
Okay. All right, well, good evening. If you would just tell us about your business this evening for the, for the council here tonight. They may have some questions. You've already gone through your inspections and sign up. So tell us a little bit about your service.
We have the liquor, liquor store with the packet food. I mean, yeah, the liquor sale, liquor and the packet food. That's it.
Okay.
Aren't you already in business?
Yeah, we already have a couple, a couple licenses in the market, city of Markham. I, I'm the business owner of the 159th and Crawford, the Shell Gas Station. And also I'm the 159th and Crawford, the mobile.
Right. Yeah, this will be new for them. They're taking over that business. Well, they're not taking it over.
Yeah.
They bought it. Okay. Any questions?
No.
Okay.
Make a motion to close the floor to 167 Dixie.
On favor? Okay. Counsel, would you please?
I make a motion that we grant a business license to 167 Dixie Highway, approved and taken.
Motion by Aldo Lady McDowell, second by Alderman Baron for approval of license for 167 Dixie Food and Liquor LLC. Roll call.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Aldo Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Motion carries. Amicia's Enterprises LLC.
Make a motion that we open.
Hello, yes, I'm here.
Make a motion that we open the meeting to Amicia's LLC.
Okay, good evening, Ms. Amicia. We would like that you would tell us the nature of your business for the city council tonight. And it looks like you passed all your inspections as well.
Yes, sir. Hi, I'm a restaurant that's offering upscale soul food and, well, American cuisine with a twist of Creole and upscale at a bar. You know, bar food menus as well, but we are a restaurant.
Counsel, any questions?
Yes, I do. Ms. Amicia, this is at Natty Locks, correct?
Yes.
Okay, yes, I, I do want to just say one thing. I think you are excellent cook. I have actually tasted your food, and I appreciate you all being in compliance with following the city of Markham protocol by coming in to receive your, their business license for Natty Locks as well. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
I too, I was, you know, samples. I was smell that, I was sending samples.
We'll make sure we make that happen.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any other questions, folks? Okay.
Make a motion that we close the floor to Amicia's LLC.
On favor?
Mayor Expower.
Yes.
Make a motion that we grant a business license to Amicia's LLC. Second.
Motion by Alderman Baron, second by Alderman Jones for approval of business license for Amicia's LLC. Roll call.
Aldo Lady Hampton Howzer.
Yes.
Alderman Jones.
Yes.
Alderman Baron.
Yes.
Aldo Lady McDowell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, counsel. Can, we're going to go back to work if you guys don't mind. Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.
Okay. That's broken, yeah?
That's all I have this evening.
Okay, thank, thank you for everything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, good evening, everyone. Under mayor's report, I just have one item tonight just to mention about cleanup, spring cleanings. We're hoping to get it started about May 9th. That's our target time. Obviously, we're headed to our month, so I want to have a clean community. So I would strongly encourage everybody, if you got all those things you want to get cleaned up and cleaned out, get them out so we can help you get them from home and get the neighborhood clean. I would like to encourage people on, around your neighborhood and around your properties and things like that. If you, if you see some things in the street, you can get out there and pick them up, pick them up. Let us know if the street is overwhelmingly bad. We'll get the, the public works people to get down the side street. But we want to know who the culprits are. So you have to turn somebody in. If you would, we appreciate it. So we have to talk with them. Because that's how we're going to make sure that the neighborhood stays clean. Just let us know and we'll make sure. Because some people take a little bit more pride than others in doing that. It just takes all of us working together to do it. I think that we're headed some good places in terms of the cleanliness of the community and what we're trying to do overall. So I wanted my report to be kind of short on the cleanup effort. That's really where I'm at, so.
Um. We have a date for that, I'm sorry.
May 9th is when we want to get kicked, we're going to kick it off. It'll be in the water bill. We'll, we'll get it out there, we'll put it on the cable channels as well as the website and all of the places where we could let people know to start getting some of those things out that you had for too long and will get rid of. So come by me, I'm going to have a yard sale, so. You'll see, I have a whole bunch of stuff to get rid of. Okay, what was city administrators report?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council and members of the public. I'm Mayor Chan, we're city administrator. And just a few things, Mayor, just want to talk about some of the things that we're working on in the state, federal, county levels. We're working diligently to go out to grants that can help with our water and sewer issues. Those are some of the things that we know that the city of Markham is desperately, desperately in need of. So we're working with our lobbyists and looking at certain legislation that's going to help improve the infrastructure of the city. As you may or may not know, there's about $19 million that are coming down from the feds in reference to improving, to Illinois, to improving the infrastructure. As I mentioned in the last council meeting, we are working on a construction budget right now. Some of those funds are ready, we have 80% of the application already completed. Also, we are going to the International Conference of Shopping Centers in May. While that is important, we have some, some commercial real estate that we want to develop out. So we're looking at restaurants. We know that the city of Markham is definitely in need of some sit-down restaurants. We want to make sure that we keep our tax dollars here in the city. So we will be, small contingency on this particular panel here right now. The council that'll be attending that conference in Vegas in, in May, I think it's the third week. Other than that, Mayor, I think that is my update.
Okay, just still in my report, I'll just mention one thing I left out just for the, to support what Mr. Chan is doing. I spent three days down in Springfield trying to bolster more support from the legislators. We met with at least, well, we certainly met with our local legislators, but we met with another 15 and some caucus members. So they assured us about a lot of different things we could do to get infrastructure improvements. So we're really working diligently on that as well. So that, we'll go over to automatic and ward reports. Alderman Jones, good evening.
Good evening, thank you. Just to piggyback, the mayor, the mayor, the city council and the park district. So you have teams, running his, please bring them out. You know, it's going to be a great time, 12 o'clock, Rock in the Park, sponsored by City of Markham, Project A-Pow, the park district. So please come out, enjoy it, that's what it's about, you know? You know, losing the sun coming out, getting time out, that's, that's Vegas. Yeah, sorry, it's going there, okay? So also, I like to, close to the board, if I can have a, a block club party on Willow Lane, Miss Hugh, on July 4th. I like to block that street off on July 4th. If you have that, like the next meeting, between the agenda to approval or.
We can go ahead of formality, it's something we can kind of just do administratively and get with the police. But it's always good to announce it to the public, you know? That way, you know, they usually get a consensus on the street. So they, they come with a petition basically, so everybody's, you know, pretty much in unison about doing it. So, but if there's anything contrary to it, you know, you would know because they're going to call you a complaint, so. But no, we can, we can just informally, just let everybody go through the motion.
Great. And also, also I'd like to mention that if you're in the third ward and you want to have a block club party on your block, let me know and I will sponsor. I know, I believe in, let's bring the neighborhood back in the hood. We always say, we, the hood's been the hood. Let's be back in the neighborhood. And I think block is where it's saying, I grew in Markham, I remember the block of parties that we used to have. I mean, it was just fun, you know, it was a neighborhood. There was always in the hood and stuff like that, no, we're in neighborhood. We're a group of people coming together to have fun and to enjoy each other's company. So if you, if you're in the third ward and you, you want to have a, a kid together, let me know, I would love to sponsor you, I have the food, you know? I know with COVID-19, if anyone could give us cooking, so I will sponsor the food, let's know. And I like to help in that department, okay? So please, in my third ward, the one who blocked up this summer, please let me know, I'd like to give you a lot. All right? Also, kudos once again to the fire department, police department, you are doing such a fabulous job in the, in the Kingberry area. I mean, I can't give you all the praise. We was having all kinds of shootings, all of a sudden, bang, 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 shoot, 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 you know, all kinds of phone calls. There's a riot shooting, you know, and nobody could figure out what's going on. Well, the fans came in, loaded the police department and found out the people who was doing these shootings. They actually was doing some stuff, but they had guns and stuff in their house, in other house. So I kudos again to the police department and the fire department for all they've done because that's what it's about, making you all safe. You want to make sure you're safe and comfortable, you know, I don't like it. Some people say, they're free to come out at night, you know, Chicago, you in your car, you get shot. You know, we haven't in Markham, you know, we want to enforce the law. If you do wrong, we coming at you. You know, thanks to the mayor, you know, he actually brought in more police officers. Now I will transfer for doing that right now because we believe in your safety. We want you to come out in, you know, in your pajamas and have fun. Nah, just joking, just joking. But once again, you know, kudos to the fire department. But last but not least, one more thing, Crisker has just approved a $39 million assistance program. Now, this assistance program is for eligible households who be able to afford the $30,000 in free assistance to pay your mortgage, your property taxes, your property insurance, your delinquent homeowners and co-owners insurance fees. You know, it's another $30,000. So if you need assistance because due to COVID or something like that, please come to get your ground state work. It's new, not the old one, it was last year's new one. Okay, they, they approved $39 million. So please take advantage if you need, back on your mortgage, if you go take advantage of insurance, even property taxes, property taxes. Please take advantage of this, that's in my, my.
Alderman Jones, I really want to, you know, you know, put the push out there like you're saying to a lot of your constituents in your ward about the block party. You know, we've been trying to do that the last several years. So that's just another small way of doing it to encourage people to come out within the community. So please get with Alderman Jones or encourage it in the other wards as well. I know that they do, they do ward fest, but the smaller ones are just as nice.
Yes.
So please get with your Alderman about trying to celebrate and know your neighbors in the community. So that's a very good thing. Good evening, Alderman.
That we have, last our retired deputy chief of Parker. They had a service on at the BFW. Last week, unfortunately, it's out of town. He served the city, was volunteer firefighter. Put a lot of distinction, he's a great guy. And I wish everybody in advance that Happy Easter. The BFW has two more fish fries this Friday and the following Friday. And, and everybody just raves about the fish dinners. So just that, that'll be the one for right now.
Just to mention, there's been several fallen firefighters since COVID, more than I, than I, I can even name tonight. And there's been a lot of residents as well that we'll try and memorialize. I think we really need to get together about that. We, a lot of people never really got any, you know, respects paid to them. So I know that we're also working on a history program as well. But we've had a lot of people that the only thing we could do is do a drive-by by their house. I know we did a few people like that, but I know one of the firemen did the bell ceremony for Chief Parker. So those things are quite important and we remember a lot of people who served. Of course, I, I know these guys because I've been with them for years, for over 40 years. But there's many others that we need to, a lot of residents as well, we need to acknowledge themselves. Well, yeah, he was a, he was a chief in the military. So we'll, we'll, we'll make up for some lost time and try and do some memorials when time comes. Thank you. Good evening, Aldo Lady Hampton.
Good evening, Mayor, good evening, residents of Markham, all who are in attendance at this present time. Good evening to you all. Mayor, I want to start off with just award one in reference to abandoned homes. We know throughout the years in the city of Markham, we have had our true fair share of abandoned homes in our community. I have identified a minimum of 15 thus far that truly needs a lot of assistance as far as tear downs. And Coffee Information had a meeting with the city administrator and we're actually figuring out funding in reference to how to get those particular properties tore down. Number two, tree cutting has started as well. Residents of Ward 1, I've identified a lot of the trees that need to be cut down or trimmed back, also the trees that you had given me as well. And I brought that to the mayor as well, so we are truly working on that. And if I'm not mistaken, I think it's going to be started on that this week or the early part of next week in reference to go ahead and get those trees and stuff cut down, especially when there's no leaves on, on the trees. That's the best time to actually utilize that service. I do have a coffee sip that's coming up for Ward 1. At the particular, at this coffee sip, I'm going to go into more details in reference to educating individuals on exactly how the protocol goes about in municipalities. So when you come to me, you say, you know, I need, I need that tree cut down. I need this house trimmed back or whatever it takes to be abandoned, cut, demolished. Well, there's procedures, and I think it's important that you understand and educate, try to help educate the individuals on exactly what the procedure or the protocol is to that. Because many times when you ask for something or whatever, it doesn't happen simultaneously. We have to make sure that we strategically figure out the correct and the legal way of going about doing that to make sure that we don't get sued and they take your taxpayer money. So please get an opportunity, come out next week Saturday, which is the 7th, 17th. So please get an opportunity, come out next week Saturday, which is the seven seventeen, I think it is, next Saturday. Not this upcoming Saturday, but the following Saturday from ten to one at the Markham Community Black Club, one hundred sixty second and last one. Uh also, please be looking out for, in Ward One, we be looking out for our newsletter. I have a newsletter that's out at this particular time, I'm gonna have it mailed out, I have other information to go out to you as well, so it's probably gonna be hand delivered, but in here, it gives you a lot of information on what's going on in the city of Markham and what's going on in Ward One, and also some education information that we need to share as well. So we can live in a community or whatever, but we still need to be educated about how democracy and municipalities work. So please be looking out for this newsletter as well. I also wanna say that uh Ward One will be having our our festival, which will be August twenty seventh, twenty twenty two. It's gonna be at King Park as well, of course, we have one thus far under this new administration, one thus far at King Park, but because of the COVID for the last two years or whatever, it's it just wasn't safe. But I pray and make sure that our COVID level stays down to the point where we can all gather up, have a good time, and have an awesome fest for the children, for the adults, free food, the whole nine yards. And if you attended the first one, you can imagine what this what this one's gonna look like as well. And so we also gonna have a lot of educational things going on at that fest as well, so please be aware of that. Um you know how we had the police academy? Well, anyway, I had some conversation, had a meeting with the fire chief as well. And with the fire chief, I said, I think it's important that not only do we educate individuals in reference to what happens in the legal part of the police department, but also educate you what happens on the fire department side. So we're actually putting together some dates and times and trying to get everything situated, so we can actually have not only a police academy, but also a fire department academy as well, and so they have to educate all of us so we can be well rounded. And then also, I wanna give kudos out to Public Works, Public Works has truly been out here, and they have been truly working hard, trying to get a lot of things done, trying to make sure that we can get these easements cleaned up a little bit more, the abandoned homes cleaned up. And so I had a a meeting with uh Ed, uh and he stated that basically what he's gonna do, he's trying to switch the things up a little bit, and we're gonna be working ward to ward, and then it's gonna just continue, one, two, three, four, one, two, three, four, until we can get a good control over the over uh uh growth of the shrubs and the weeds and everything for these vacant homes. So please be patient with us, we are truly working towards that. And then uh last but not least, I just wanna say happy Easter to everyone, whoever it applies to. Happy Easter to you, thank you for coming out uh to the city council meeting, because you're not here for no reason, you're here for a reason. So I wanna thank you for that as well, and then Mayor, um oh, one more thing, I'm sorry. At this particular time, do you all, are you all aware of our siren system? So when you hear the siren, what do you think? Do you just ignore it, or you say, oh, that happens all the time? Well, with that siren system, we, and this is why education is so important. We, the siren system is tested the first Tuesday, I think the first Tuesday or the first Wednesday of each month. So when you hear that siren system, you'll hear the sound go up and then it'll fade down, and it'll go up, and it'll fade down. That means it's in the testing area, but when you hear a siren and has a high pitch constantly, that means there was a tornado spotted. Dispatch alarms the siren system, for you can be alert and be aware that you need to seek cover because that tornado is in our area. So we're in the season right now for tornado season, the weather's cold and it's warm, and once that combines together, it creates a tornado. So please, whenever you hear the siren, okay, it's at night, middle of night, whatever, just remember, okay, let me listen for the tones. Listen for the tones, if it go up and down, we good, if it stay high, hey, we need to do something. So I wanna just make sure that we are well educated about that as well. Other than that, Mayor, that's my report, I thank you.
Thank you, All Lady Hampton, uh I just wanna let everybody, it's Award One, you don't wanna miss a meeting, you see it where it's going um in terms of really trying to educate the public about what we're doing and from day to day and making some better understanding. And so it's really good that we're getting into the wards to try to broaden what people know about community and what what different things mean. And uh we'll have a lot of, for some people who don't know who Ed is, he's the assistant field superintendent, that's who she was referring to, with Public Works. And so these are the people that uh get things done, and they're in communication with get things done in the wards. So we really wanna let, make sure you get in touch with your Alderman about the things that they're doing in the wards. Good evening, All Ladies McDowell.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, residents. On tonight on our report, one hundred fifty eighth street, uh as I was walking around this week, um I know it's a sixteen-wheeler truck parked there, and sixteen wheeler trucks are not allowed when I walk into the street. Uh I did reach out to Lieutenant, um and they came out and checked it out, and it was a stolen truck there. We have numerous of cars on one hundred and fifty eighth street, it's almost becoming a parking lot. And I don't, uh we need more control over there, because the people, actually residents actually have drivers. So um I'm asking for more control on one hundred and fifty eighth street. Also, residents are asking if it's starting to get a little warm, um and I know last year, we seeked out with the speed bumps or speed humps, uh so just kind of wanna know our status uh with the speed bump, so I will get back to the residents in regard to the speed um down a lot of our streets, I did turn that uh list over um to the field supervisor, uh Ed. Um so just kind of uh update on what's going on with those. Also, I have received numerous phone calls from some of the local businesses in our ward who are asking for special permits to have different events in their parking lot, so um I'm gonna straight out and give you those things of those things that I mentioned out um they're requiring to have events in the second ward. And last, I would like to wish everyone a happy reservation, that's it, everybody.
Uh thank you, All Lady uh McDowell, um in reference to speed humps, I have a meeting with Public Works tomorrow.
They've been ordered.
What's that?
They've been ordered.
Yeah, well, we gotta make sure that they arrive this time. Right, COVID was a problem, but we we gotta make sure we get them in, we have some other alternatives, I just need streets from you all um where you're having trouble. So myself, the administrator, uh we'll meet with Public Works um tomorrow. So we we we're meeting in fact about several of these items, so we'll we'll address that. Um and uh just as I'll mention down here about the rotation of uh cleaning in the ward, so we got several things.
I believe that speed humps were ordered six, eight and three each for.
Okay, well. Yeah, all right, we'll follow up and just get street, get ready with streets that you have interest for, and definitely so you know how this kind of goes, make sure you talk with those residents, because you know, with with one likes, the other one doesn't, we know how that goes. So, all right, um, okay. Uh we'll be going over the public session, let me just mention tonight, we have a lot of people here, uh you'll be limited to three minutes. We have a timekeeper, the city administrator, but you're welcome to speak tonight. Uh could we get someone to help us with the podium, Chief, could you get one of the guys or something to move that podium a little bit, Rick? What's that?
I said I had to point you to the podium.
You do? Okay, all right. Okay, on favor? All right, it's okay, good, good evening, public, if you have signed up, if you wanted to speak uh tonight, you could sign up with us. We'll call you, your name often come up. Nobody else, okay? Okay, you can sign up. There's a young lady here.
Okay.
I think she's got somewhere. All right.
Okay, we'll start with Vicki Halsey.
All of the Markham residents and especially those who came out to support me tonight. Support me tonight. Right off the bat, I grew up here in, I moved here in nineteen seventy six, educated here in my. Started working for myself in two thousand. Started at a bar shop, a base spot on uh Seventy Third and Exchange in Chicago. Within that time, I relocated and moved over into South Shore, Seventy First and Creamy. And in in doing that, I was a grocery community where I did uh Black Club parties and school giveaways and uh pins and book bags. That was my life. And then, but my passion was always a bar, I always wanted to do a bar. I opportunity came once so that I could purchase a bar on Eighty Third and South Chicago called the New Celebrity Lounge. Well, there was a celebrity lounge in, but when I bought it, it was a new celebrity lounge, right? I took this old bar that was gang ridden and young folks running rampant, and I made it one of the hottest premier spots in South Side, Chicago. And because I'm from Markham, I wanted to take my skill and my ambitions, because my mother still lives, she's seventy five years old, drives past this place every day. I wanted to come back to Markham to bring my skills and talents and my ability to bring Markham, not just a a bar for adults, but a a menu and a grill area where we have healthier choices and healthier foods, where we're not just eating fried foods all the time in a bar and drinking, but to actually build a community around that, and to do that same thing that I did in the city with the Black Club parties and all of that. I submitted an application, I came in Markham, July, in July, to tell, to report what I, my plans worked for George's Waring Real that came available to sale at one hundred fifty seven point five South Kins. Uh I was sold to go to the buildings department and I put in my um application. I paid my fees for my inspections. I waited the beginning of October, I got a call that said I got inspection scheduled, wonderful, I'm excited. October eleventh, I got a call that said, no mistake, your application wasn't approved yet, so you must wait. And I waited and I waited and I waited, I'm here today, because you guys did a vote and decreased the liquor licenses in Markham. And that, as my application sat pending since August, knocked me completely out. Because now I'm told that there are no more liquor licenses available, although my application has been pending since August. So I'm asking this council, with the support of all these people that came out there, to grandfather my application in, so that I can get a liquor license and open my doors. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your consideration, and y'all pray for me, thank you.
Okay.
Cornell, sir.
Good evening, Miss Mayor.
Good evening.
Members of the great city of Markham, my name is Dr. Cornell Darden Jr. I'm the president and CEO of the Southland Black Chamber of Commerce. Uh we've had a lot of issues here in Southland with opening businesses. Uh we have a lot of members who have consistently uh reached out to their local communities that they were born and raised in and have had a a very, very difficult time, especially over the last two years. I wanna say the chamber gets an average of one in two calls a week with uh people calling and crying because they've been denied a a business license, they've been denied a liquor license. Uh the chamber is a is an institution, it's a very large institution, we're actually the largest black business association in the state of Illinois. We have a very well-trained staff, uh that's very knowledgeable about laws, about policy, and those sort of things. Uh we've seen a rapid capriciousness uh throughout the area, and uh some of you may have know, have known about uh some of those issues. Uh but it happens over and over and over, uh the saddest thing to me is that we're from these communities where we're having the most problems. But we don't have those issues in, say, Water Park or Frankford. Uh some of you may know, black people in this country open businesses more than any other ethnic group. We open more business, but because of discrimination, uh because of capriciousness like we see here in Southland. Those things caused us to fail at a higher level than any ethnic group, even though we create more businesses. I believe that communication is key, I believe that we need to communicate more uh with our local officials and municipalities. Uh communication leads to collaboration, and collaboration leads to solutions.
One minute.
Some of our problems. Uh I definitely would like to uh sit with you, Mr. Mayor, uh to discuss uh some of the things, not anything that's specific uh to Markham, uh but just with the work of the chamber and what we've been doing, and also how we can collaborate with you guys. We have about thirteen minutes to balance, there are members of the chamber like Lyle Island, Water Park, Frankford, Chicago Heights, Dalton, Robbins, I think it would be a good idea to have Mark as member, and we would love to collaborate with you guys, thank you.
Yeah, um.
My name is Sam. I'm representing Vicki. I've been going to Georgia for maybe about fifteen to twenty years. And uh I think it's a very comfortable place for senior citizens like us to attend. Uh it's never been a problem lately, but the problem is no different than other bars that's in Markham such as Kickoff or any of the other bars that's there. I think it's very wrong how you treat this lady, I wouldn't do, she's put a lot of money into rebuilding this bar. Uh she renovated it, she's even changed the age group of people to attend. Um like I said, I've been attending it for a lot of years, and you meet good people, there are good people that come here, very nice people. So don't judge the bad people over the good people that comes to attend this bar. Um I really feel sorry for her, and uh we all, it's not just me, there's a lot of people that attended Georgia's, and we miss it. We truly miss it, we want to come back to Georgia's, we're all waiting, we're all waiting on it to reopen. You know, because it was a good place, it was a good place, there were union workers that attended there, uh there were good people that attended. You know, you cannot um hold her responsible for anything that happened before she even owned the place. You know, I think it's wrong how she's been treated, and I think it's personal. Personally, to me, I think it's personal, and you know, I just hope that uh you guys just look at it a different way.
One minute.
Right, so, I don't know, just look at the person, I, she's a good person, I think the bar is a good place. Like I say, it's good with people that are my age and up, you know, not younger people, but still for my age enough to go out and just hang with people that's like me, you know, so just reconsider, you know, stuck in front of hard time, it's ridiculous.
Good evening, everybody, really welcome, and everybody.
Really welcome and everybody. My name, I live about one fifty-seven, thirty-two, Markham, right behind Georgia's. It's about fifteen of us I represent. We put the petition together. We've had shootings, most of us have been retired over there. Half the time, we can't sleep till three or four o'clock in the morning. We didn't have shoes over there, we were getting kind of get down on the ground and, and, and we can't sleep. The noise is going on to three or four in the morning, the cussing, the buzzing, throwing bottles, everything. I'm telling you, we can't sleep. We watch the TV, that's, you know, the crew, everybody comes around. My daughter's wrong, everybody on the floor, because we're so scared. You know, we can't control who coming to the neighborhood. All of us are good people here. When people come, you don't know what they have in their car, what they have on them. We mostly retired, honey. We can't even sleep over there. Two or three o'clock in the morning, they're shooting, they're buzzing, they're fighting. Police there call all times, saying like, popping all around the street, all down the progress, they have, popping all along the lots and everything. I'm just here to say what we've been going through for the last couple of years. We love Markham. We love it here. We want to be with our neighbors. We don't want to feel like we can't come home, we can't go to sleep. You got a gun, what is all night? It's just too much. That's all I can't even mean once they say. And then the man said, have, try to keep good business in the neighborhood, keep the neighborhood safe, that's what we're gonna do. But we are residents and we really care, we're scared when they got all the crowds, lolly crowds, can't sleep, buzzing, fighting all night, it's like we in our house and they're right in our backyard, Georgia's, they left me on the street corner all night, cussing for them all night and then they start shooting. Thank y'all so much. Thank you so much.
Melanie Spears.
Good evening. I just had two things and that number one, I've been in my house on the south end of Oxford Drive since nineteen seventy-one. Approximately a week ago, officer came to my door, asked me, did I know what was going on across the street? Then he showed me bullet holes in my house. I'm a firm believer in God. I was in the back of the house, but normally I sit in the front of the house watching television. The bullets did not come all the way through, partially, I think, because I had siding put on the house and the wood behind it probably caused the bullets to be embedded there in the house. One by the kitchen, one above the living room picture window. It's my understanding that there have been many problems with the family across the street where the bullets would have come from and that someone had circled in the circle across from me three times. The third time is when they started shooting into the house across the street and the people returned fire. I've been told that a request has been made before to get those people out. I don't know whether they're buying or renting. Secondly, the Ring Doorbell assistance. I know the city of Chicago is doing this and I wanted to know if we could get something like that done in Markham because I don't know about anybody else. Alderman Jones, no, I will call in a minute about what's going on because I feel like that's my responsibility, not just depend on you all and the police department to do something and we as the residents keep quiet. Southern America's been quiet all these years. Most of these things happened recently. We need more police patrols and for them to be seen, not just during the daytime, but also at night, because in the winter, I have some idiot that comes and do, does donuts in the snow in the circle. If they lose control, they're gonna be sitting in my lap. I don't have any problems. Your police department can tell you, you don't have any problems with me in all these years. Pay my taxes. So, at this point, something needs to be done to help residents of the city, to help the city maintain the level where more people are going to want to come and be residents and not have to worry like the previous lady said, to have all these shootings and things going on and there is no deterrent. Thank you.
Thank you. Was she last one?
No. Willie Reed?
Let me just address before Mr. Reed comes up. Mr. Reed, one second. Ms. Spears, um, we're, we're gonna take some time with you and call you. Me and Alderman Jones will get together on, but we have started addressing the immediate problem over there. So, I can tell you that the next day, we started right away getting with the problem. We, we know about it. We've dug into it much deeper. So, we'll give you some, some details. Um, it's not up to you to do what we need to do, but we do appreciate how much you want to do. We want you to be safe and don't get in harm's way over there. So, we're gonna take some time with her. Uh, let's do that. Uh, Alderman Jones and I will get with you and we'll take some time to tell you what we're working on with the police. Okay? Okay, Mr. Reed?
I've been a resident at one seven nineteen Whipple for over thirty-nine years now. And a major problem that I have come in contact with is standing in flooding water. And all this rain, I know you all have same similar problem that I have. And the most detrimental thing to a house is standing in flooding water. We pay Kamenet Union Drainage a little sum, but from all of us, it amounts to a large sum. And I believe that that should be used, utilized to get some drainage, get that water out, that standing water. There's water standing and I know this is the prairie and it belongs to the prairie, but there should be some communication with the prairie that we don't have to have standing water, uh, like a creek behind my house. And so, that, that's my concern, but all, I know we all have that problem here in Markham because I've been around in the area and I've seen it. We need to get Kamenet Union Drainage of someone else to get some drains so that water can move out of my, our housing here.
Mr. Reed, uh, I'll, I'll touch base with Old Lady McDowell and we'll get over there. I, I, I noticed in the last few years, it's gotten increasingly worse behind the properties on Whipple on the east side, I mean, east property, east, the east side of those properties. And I don't understand what it, it didn't drain like that before. It's rained much better. So, I don't, I don't know. I know that there is a, um, there's a culvert that kind of runs through the, through the prairie, so maybe that might have a issue where it's backed up. We'll find out. Old Lady McDowell, can we get together? Okay. All right, we'll, we'll get, we'll get in touch with you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Uh, let me just make a couple of comments about, um, a couple of things that, uh, when people had come up to speak tonight, um, let me just mention, and I, I'll, I'll just be a little specific to be fair with, with you as I can be. Ms. Hosey, I know that you, uh, did come and approach the city some time ago. I know you've been here a few times and you've talked with, um, the city administrator over time. But there were some processes ahead of you before you had even gotten here. I've been here for five years, solidly three or better. And so, there's been things that have been decided way before you got here in terms of what the, the city's plan or vision is and where it's heading to. And so, I know that your process had some missteps in it and they weren't all belonging to us. It was the, the owner that was down there and you made an agreement with them and never talked to us about those agreements until later. They had their own problems way ahead of you as well. So, but to, to not just address your issue, you know, longevity has its places. Yeah, I've been here since nineteen sixty-one. And, you know, I do know one thing of being here for about forty-five years, so it'd be make about fifteen years old when I started coming around doing anything. Markham has had its share unfortunately, and if you lived here at one time, you did, you understand, you should understand, or you may or may not, that we've had more than our share of some of the things that you're requesting. We don't want to have to crush your dream, but these people have dreams too. They have dreams of tranquility in a different manner, different way. And we have other bars in town and we have made it, I, I made the decision as the liquor commissioner to reduce what we have. I think that that's what my responsibility is and that's, that's the position I took as the leader of the city. I, I'm not sure what Mr. Darden was saying in terms of capriciousness, that, that, I, I don't think that that's the case here and I don't think you've been treated unfairly. It just didn't work for you. So, it, what may be fair for you may not be fair for somebody else. And maybe there is a problem in Southland, but these, these council members, their vote, they vote and they have a say as well. And every time that we have issues, we discuss them. That's democracy. I'm not running a, a dictatorship here. I'm running a government and that's what we're responsible. I'm responsible to the people, not to, to, uh, a, a special interest or a specific business. I have a responsibility to everybody. So, where it didn't work for you, it worked for three other bars that are open. And then they were recently under fire because of a couple of other bars that, that have been issued and that's just how, kind of how it goes sometimes. These are, these were processes, I, I would just say that, um, again, um, there's nothing personal here. If, if anything, there, there's, I could take some things personally because I have an address here, but I'm not. I'm taking it in, in the realm of what the people want. And I get phone calls equally about support of bars as well as I get them where they don't want them. So, we have to balance that out. And so, we've had plenty of blood in our streets. We've had, and we still haven't, we, we've got people that not just maybe your bar or another bar could bring. We have people here evidently that are a magnet to bring in some people that shoot that Ms. Spears can't live like she needs to live on her street. So, that's our challenge is to try to do what we need to do internally in our communities. And some people, we had three businesses that they, they ran right through and it worked for them. Some of your steps didn't work for you and it, and the timing wasn't there. And I can tell you, again, what we had planned in terms of what we're gonna do with this community was before I ever met you. And you've been here a long time, but I've never met you. I've been down the street, but no disrespect to you or any other business. So, that's why I'm taking the time to mention it. If, if, if it weren't important to me to mention to be fair with you or any other business, I'll be fair with you and I, equally as I have to be fair with the, the residents. And that sometimes it doesn't, we have businesses that we deny. And every business that comes to the community doesn't mean that they open. You know, it's just like, you have to understand, there are people that take the police and fire exam and they fail it. And guess what? It's a good thing that they did because they would, they shouldn't put out a fire if they can't pass the test. It doesn't mean that maybe something else is for them. I'm not gonna tell you or anybody else what's for you, but I'm just using an example to, that some things don't work out. And, you know, I certainly hope the best for you. I think that, uh, we said you can maybe entertain doing something at that location different. We can see a different business model or different, different plan, but it won't be involving alcohol because we're not gonna have licenses for that. And that's where we're at at this point and I made that recommendation as the liquor commissioner. And that's the, the right of the people. I was elected by the people and that's why I made that decision. Had I felt that the people weren't gonna be for it, I wouldn't have made that decision. If, if that's, if I have an influx of people that say to me, Mr. Mayor, we, we don't, we want, we want more bars, we want a bar or more bars, then I have to listen. But I'm comfortable as the liquor commissioner and the mayor and even with all the businesses that we do have or don't have. I was elected to do something and that was a position that I've taken. And, and that's kind of where we're at at this point. So, if you want to submit something different, we'll, we'll look at it and we'll listen. And if this resurfaces again, uh, it's somewhere down the line, maybe the, the, you know, that may change the environment or the, uh, the thought of, or the vision of what we're gonna do may change and we may want to entertain more bars. Again, Markham's had more than its share, more than it's had for gunshots and shootings and people that have died, police officers that have gotten shot. So, uh, it doesn't mean that would have been your business, doesn't mean it would have been you, but either way, that's, that's, um, being fair, so. Yeah, but we, we discontinued that. I made the decision that we weren't gonna have any more bars. So, we're, there's no more liquor licenses and that was a decision that I made. It was made a long time ago, man. Long time ago. Well, that, you know what? We're, this is not, this, you, you had your time to speak already. We've already met with them, talked about it and, and that, that's, that's where we're at, but that's where we're at. I just told you what your options are and that's where we're at is what that matters. So, okay. I'll give you one more, but that'll be it. What's that? What's that? How many shootings? None since they've been closed. None since they've been closed and, and, and maybe that's why, I don't know, but we won't know. Okay, with that, we're at item? Oh, okay. Motion to close the floor to public.
Make a motion that we close the meeting to the public.
A second.